I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? I wouldn't hear.
Aye.
Okay, if y'all say so.
I read them.
Those minutes will be approved.
As always, thank you, Beth.
And we are, let's see, we have subdivi- we had a subdivision committee meeting and we will ask for a report from the chair.
Madam Chairman, the subdivision committee met and we, on our agenda, we had the Charleston Place preliminary subdivision and the Cherry Hill preliminary subdivision. There were several items that we discussed and subject to approval by the, the Public Works Department, all the items were passed unanimously, agreed upon and passed unanimously. Would you like the details?
No, that, that's perfectly fine. Okay, so for the rest of everything, the Conway Planning Commission makes recommendations through the City Council on public hearing items. The City Council will make a final decision on these items using Planning Commission recommendations as a guide. Items reviewed at tonight's Planning Commission meeting may be considered by the City Council on September the twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. Items not approved by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council within thirty days after Planning Commission denial. If an item is appealed to the City Council, a public notice sign will be placed on the property, pardon me, at least seven days prior to the City Council meeting, and a public notice will be placed on the city's website at www.cityofconway.org. Is everybody clear on those dates? Okay. And so, for the public hearing items, we tabled this request at one of them. I believe the Dyer request for conditional use permit to allow general retail in an O-one zoning district for property located at twenty-five forty-five Prince Street. You guys postponed it at the August meeting, I guess?
Yes.
So, at this time, did you hear any public hearings on it? Okay. At this time, is there anybody to speak in favor of that request? And sir, you'll have ten minutes to, to speak your piece and anybody, any additional people to speak in favor will have two minutes. Same thing on the opposition. The first speaker will have ten minutes and everybody else has two. So with that being said, Mr. Dyer, I believe that's who you are.
My name is Phil Dyer, I live at thirty-two seventy Nutter Chapel Road and I've been in Conway all my life. So, this is the first time I've ever been to a city planning commission that I didn't know anybody on the planning commission. That's kind of scary. So, anyway, what I'm asking for is, is, and I'll explain you kind of how we got to if you want me to. I'm asking, it's already O-one, I'm just asking to change the conditional use where they have got it sixty percent retail and forty percent office to just a general retail use. And if you want to know how I got there, I'll tell you real quick how, how that ended up getting that way.
You have ten minutes, so.
Okay. Well, what we did, we, we have three owners. We have John Coffey, myself and, and Dennis White. And we had all these properties that we all wanted to sell and we thought at first that the best thing to do is just lump them together and offer them as a package. So we came to the Planning Commission with a, a drawing, I don't know if any of you got it, but it's just a, a layout of several buildings with retail in the front and office in the back because it made sense for developer. Okay, we didn't have a buyer, we didn't have anything lined out. John Coffey, that was kind of his brainchild to do it that way. And we all kind of agreed. So, that's how it got, ended up sixty percent retail, forty percent office. So, after that, a lot of time went by, like nine years. And I've had my property, I've had several people look at my property, but they don't want, they don't want to go before you guys. I mean, you can understand. Anyway, so finally, I, I had it sold. Well, we had it sold once to L.A. Fitness Center and that was going real good, but John Coffey didn't want to wait for them to get everything they needed done. So they were buying his property and my property together. So that kind of fell through, but that's fine, it's his property, he can do what he wants to. So, and then I had another contract on it and I still may have it, I don't know, with, with a restaurant. It's a drive-through restaurant and generate a lot of tax revenue for the city. But they may or may not buy it, but I need thirty feet of frontage, more. I don't have thirty feet of frontage, neither one of my people on either side want to sell off thirty feet. And I understand why, it's their property, they have every right to do what they want to. So that's, that's not an issue. The issue is, I need to sell my property, I'm sixty-eight, I'd like to sell it before I die. So, the, my request is to get that changed from a sixty forty, which nobody's going to buy. I mean, if you're going to put in a retail place, you wouldn't want to have forty percent office in the back. Well, you couldn't use it because you, you're limited to sixty percent retail. So, the highest and best use is a restaurant. And people are begging for hamburger restaurant on, on the west side. So, and the one that I have is that. But whether they're going to buy it, I cannot, they've got a contract in front of them, they don't mean they're going to buy it, even if I get it rezoned because of the frontage issue. If, I don't know if they can work that out, they don't know yet either. So that's what I'm asking for.
Okay.
You have any questions?
Not at this time, I don't think. We'll call you back up.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this request? You'll have two minutes, sir.
I'm George Roberts, I'm a certified general appraiser here in Conway.
Okay, can you give us your address, please?
My office is two thousand one Washington Avenue is my office.
Okay.
Mr. Dyer just requested that I take a look at the property and take a look at his request. So, we met at the site one day last week and he just asked me if that was, I thought was a reasonable use and a reasonable request. And I do agree that retail, considering the zoning in there, if legal, would be the highest and best use for that property. You have any questions?
Not at this time. I don't think, we'll call you back up.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this request? You'll have two minutes, sir.
I'm George Roberts, I'm a certified general appraiser here in Conway.
Okay, can you give us your address, please?
My office is two thousand one Washington Avenue is my office.
Okay.
Mr. Dyer just requested that I take a look at the property and take a look at his request. So, we met at the site one day last week and he just asked me if that was, I thought was a reasonable use and a reasonable request. And I do agree that retail, considering the zoning in there, if legal, would be the highest and best use for that property. You have any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Pledger, I live very close there, twelve Colonial Drive. I could get there with a two iron about five times. I knew he'd have a smart aleck answer about that. But anyway, I don't understand all of the, the goings-on of the Planning Commission and all of this. But, I mean, the whole street is full of hamburger joints and workout centers and whatever. And I think it's time to change the rules and, and, and get, get us a good hamburger joint in there if we can.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none, is there anybody to speak in opposition of this request? Yes, sir.
I'm not speaking in opposition, well, I'm Brian Patrick, I'm the planning director. And I'm personally not speaking in opposition or the city taking a stance on this, but I was asked to read a letter by George Anderson, or I can't pronounce it the proper way, but he answers to George. So, I'm totally not doing this as a city or me personally as planning director, but I was asked to read his letter, so I'm going to read his letter and he's in opposition. So bear with me while I read his letter, please. This is from George Anderson who lives behind the property in question. I'll just read. Dear Director and Commission, due to prior commitment, I am unable to join you this evening. We are aware that Mr. Phil Dyer has requested advanced consideration to rezone the aforementioned property on Prince Street and asking for a conditional use permit for general retail on the property. I have a few concerns. First, my wife and I are originally led to understand that the entire strip on Prince Street, starting from the westmost corner of this property, eastward to Ferris Road, was going to be developed as one sole conceptual commercial development. Now that it's being cut up and obviously sold off as varied parcels, that can, that concept is obviously negated. My concern is for Conway and the way in which architectural aesthetics are being overlooked in various pockets of the city. This is one example. We have the opportunity to see something great developed on this beautiful piece of land and that will now be foregone. Second, possibly something more serious than what is referred to in my first comment is the neglect of safety being considered for walkers and bikers on our beautiful bike trail running along Tucker Creek. A venture that encroaches on this valued asset is most unfortunate. Third, I have been told off the record that a fast food concern is considering this property. My wife, Annabelle, and I, with our property backed up on the south side of the parcel, fear such adventure would attract vermin, noise, and unbearable food odors literally in our side yard. Fourth, should this be the, should this be the determinant of your commission to approve the rezoning of the two hundred feet of frontage along twenty-five forty-five Prince Street? It is our sincere hope that adequate screening on the entire south side of the property be provided, ensuring our privacy. I do respect the authority of the commission and hope that your decision will be based on the greater good for the community. Respectfully submitted, George Anderson and Annabelle Anderson at twenty-five ninety Adams Brook. There you go.
Thank you, sir. Did we, I didn't, I didn't see it.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, what did that say? Okay, is there anybody else here to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we'll bring it back into commission. What do y'all think?
I like, I don't think it's a bad request. You know, it's, it's that one way, it's divided, you know, it's not like people are going to be trying to take a left out of there, you know, they're going to have to take a right. So, I think, I mean, you can't just deny something because of traffic issues, I don't think, every time. Because, you know, it's kind of like some of those subdivisions out south, it's, you've got to build it first and then the city will go in and improve the roads afterwards. But, I mean, this has already been improved, obviously. And, you know, if that's what he can do best for his land, I think all this stuff in there is going to be some sort of commercial or something at some point.
Yeah.
Can't deny, man, the right to sell his property to the people who want to buy it. You know, especially when you've got a Chick-fil-A across the street and a Walmart supercenter and a, or that little neighborhood market. And, you know, and that, that bike trail goes underneath Dave Ward or Prince Street, it doesn't, it doesn't have to get up on that road. So, I'm not really that concerned with the bike trail because he's not even, his land isn't, isn't even touching it.
My only issue with it is if we just blanket say, okay, they don't have to cut, the, the fast food restaurant, whoever they may be, doesn't have to come in here and do anything. And not knowing who it is, are we going to know that they're going to fence off the back of it?
Honestly.
And.
That's part of the conditions that we can add on here.
Well, it's their new conditions applicable, number three, is a brick wall.
Oh, yeah.
I honestly don't think that somebody's going to.
And one neighbor on the east side, his house is over two hundred feet from his back property line to the back of his house. And then Tommy Cothers is to the west of that and he has no opposition. And then Greg Anderson is way over, he's probably three or four hundred feet from where this property is, he doesn't really, I don't think he joins my property.
So, Ann, would you foresee, in your mind, any establishment that could come in here that would cause you concern?
Well, I, I think the fast food is going to be the most invasive. I mean, that, that's the one that's going to generate all the headlights and, you know, all the things going around.
But the fast food will be on the way front part of this lot. I mean, that.
You think?
They're not going to sit all the way at the back of this lot, there is not.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to read this.
They don't even have an approved restaurant, it's not even approved. So, we can't consider that it's going to be a fast food because he doesn't have an approved contract, so.
Yeah.
I just don't see them sitting two hundred feet off the road.
Of all the things, of all the things that it could be.
The restaurant is the one that works.
That's the one that is the, is the most concerning to me.
Even with the Chick-fil-A right across from it?
Well, the Chick-fil-A has the Walmart neighborhood centered above it from.
It's their, their closest neighbor is the Walmart supercenter and the baseball field, so, I mean, that doesn't really concern me. But, and I'm not saying that I'm completely opposed to it, that's just my concern. And let's look at the, let's look at the.
I don't think the restaurant's going to go in the way back. I mean, I still think they're going to end up with some office space in the back because no real, no guy's going to want to sell shirts in the back of this thing.
No.
It's just, you're not going to see it, it's, it's not high traffic enough. It's going to end up being offices after the fast food place takes up, whatever it takes up.
I'm going to move ahead, I could do. Okay, I'm just, I was going through the conditions real quick.
Talking about a situation like we have down at Taco Bell with the restaurant. And then some sort of complex behind there.
Yeah. If y'all don't mind, I'll explain a little bit because I know the conditional use is a little convoluted on this one. Originally, the property, like, like's been pointed out, was to be developed as one conceptual unit. So, what we have in the report, I tried to make this, try to make sense, was have new conditions applicable to Mr. Dyer's lot only. And then there's conditions that we need to address and that's what's shown in the red with the strike throughs and all that. A conditional use permit twelve seventy-seven because that one covered all the property. And it basically says sixty percent of it could be retail and forty percent of it could be office. And what I basically did, since the other people have not requested any change of their conditional use, I just took an approach that we would prorate their property down to applicable based on the amount of square footage, acreage that their property has. So that's what, basically, I did the least that I had to do to make it work with this request on the old permit, twelve seventy-seven. So that's what you see there in red is, i- i- if you want to entertain passing, approving this with whatever conditions you place on it, we also need to look at that other one and add those things in red in the strike throughs, I believe, which would make that one make more sense, basically, because otherwise they'd have more percentage than they originally had. Does that make sense? Yeah. So, I just point that out just to kind of guide you in your decision-making here as to how this thing was crafted and possibly how to amend it, so.
Okay, so we have conditions. Seven conditions there, does, does anybody want to entertain a motion? And speak to these conditions?
Well, do those conditions also take into account the amendments or separate rights?
Well, somebody's got to make a motion to do all that.
I'll make a motion.
To do, to approve?
Well, it has to be in the positive, so yes, to approve with the conditions. The only, the, the condition as far as the new conditions with number three, to enforce that as a brick wall versus the.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Pull your mic down a little bit.
Okay, yes, I make a motion to approve this request with the new conditions, as is with the exception of number three. There's a question mark as far as it being a brick fence or a wooden fence. Let's go ahead and make that condition with the brick fence and then all of the amendments that are in the conditional use for permit twelve seventy-seven.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion will carry unanimously.
So, does that, does the motion we just passed contain the additional amendments to twelve seventy-seven?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one you saw.
She said that specifically.
Just wanted to clarify.
So, Mr. Dyer, your motion passes. Okay. Any questions? Okay, moving on, Clark rezoning request, R-two A to O-two. Jan Clark requests to rezone from R-two A to O-two, the property located at fifteen seventeen Caldwell Street. Who is here to speak in favor of that?
I'm Jan Clark, I live at one thousand Regina Cove.
Okay.
I'm looking to purchase this property, this property is, is in my family. This is my cousin, Phil Wilson, here, he's the owner of the property. And I'm personally trying to buy this property. Change it to O-two to put, I, I want to keep the structure as historically correct as I can. I'm looking to put two one thousand approximately square foot offices in it and hopefully, I'm going to be one of the tenants. Now, I don't know that for sure, I've got two other partners, but that is my, what I'm wanting to do. And if not, at the very least, have two one thousand square foot quiet offices.
Okay. Okay, this is in the historic district, you realize that, so you'll have to.
I'm, yes, I'm on the agenda for next Monday with him. And then, depending on what happens here.
Right. Okay, is there anybody else to speak in favor of this request?
I will.
Okay.
My name is Ed Tyler, I'm, have an office next door at fifteen eleven Caldwell and I've been there for eight years and I'll make a couple of points. One is that, you know, the property as a, as a rental unit is, is, doesn't seem to be economically feasible. It seems to, you know, deteriorate. And I'm pleased that, that Ms. Clark is willing to invest in it and make it better. And around the corner, on Faulkner Street, there's been several rezonings that have the same, a couple of duplexes that went to office. And I, I believe that she'll do what she says she's going to do and it'll be a very good improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this request? All right, is there anybody to speak in opposition of this request? Seeing none, we'll bring it back into commission. Commissioners?
Makes total sense, I make a motion to approve.
Anything else? Any staff recommendations you want to address?
No, quite often, pretty simple, cut and dry.
I mean, I.
There's a concern about parking, especially if she's going to have to go.
I hate to be the one historic district guy that's always that guy when it comes to this conversation. But I'm still, I just cannot wrap my head around, where's Marilyn Black when you need her? The difference in why they cared about a duplex going in versus why they, they don't care about quiet office space going here, changing it from its.
Original intent.
From its original intent today. They were all up in arms about the two situations we had in front of us over the last six months.
Yeah.
This one, it's just like, meh.
That last one, though, they were in support of, totally opposite of what Faulkner had.
Which is, which is the whole other.
Right.
Brain mind bend for me, so.
I'm not part of the historic district, but I think actual business coming in and being able to make tax deductible fixer-uppers to an office and, and making it something nicer is, is good for this area. I, I mean, I've seen some of those other ones on Faulkner Street and they just always look nicer. I don't know, but I, I guess they're going to have to go before historic district to deal with all that stuff.
Yeah, the parking upgrades, I'm assuming that they're going to require that to, either to the side or around the back.
Yeah, I have, I have some pictures that I took that kind of show the relationship to, like, where the O-two, you know, the, where.
We have it, that, where the O-two is on Faulkner?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it in.
Well, okay, so you can see where, and Tyler's office is now was my cousin George's house. And those two properties were together at one time and we sold, when Bill got ready to sell his house, we sold his house. But if you see the relationship, they literally, you can hold your hands out the windows and almost touch each other, they sit so close to each other. And there's a lot of green space over to the right side that I intend to keep green space so that when you drive down Caldwell, you're not going to see the parking lot. I'm keeping a whole row of red tips so that it will be a barrier and the parking lot actually comes off a center because it's a corner lot. And so, you, coming down Caldwell, I'm trying to keep it aesthetically pleasing to not look like an office that's got this big parking lot out there, okay? Because we've, there's been some trees that are cleared and, and you obviously can see it if you drive by it. But, I'm trying to, and I want to keep the house as historically correct as I can. I'm not trying to go in and change anything or build any offices or do anything. And it's been run down because Bill was quite honestly generous to a lady who lived there for a very, very long time and never raised a rent and it got run down. I'm trying to put it back to how it needs to be and have just two quiet offices there.
Thank you.
So, Brian, how does changing this not change the historic district percentage and change the original intent of the, the land parcel?
Well, historic district's not based on zones, so it's based on structures and basically how they look from the exterior. So, you can put shag carpet and a disco ball inside and they don't care, basically, I mean, they care, but, you know, there's no regulation on that prohibiting you from doing that. What they want to see on structures is them to preserve, in this area in particular, they want to see the outside keep its historic nature, stay preserved in that state that it was when it was brought in as a historic district, preferably the state that it is in when it was built. I believe this one was like nineteen oh four, something along those lines. And most of it is historically accurate even to this point, deciding, I think, on most of the windows, all that is, is, it's all still there. So it's a contributing structure to the historic district. As far as the use goes, that's not really a factor as far as the land use goes. It's all about the structure and maintaining the structure and keeping the structure historically and accurately correct and preservation, that type thing. The parking lot, any landscaping changes she makes, I mean, basically, the things you see on the outside are the purview of the historic district commission, so all that will have to be approved by them, I mean. And most of it is historically accurate even to this point. I'm deciding, I think, on most of the windows, all that is, is, it's all still there. So it's a contributing structure to the historic district. As far as the use goes, that's not really a factor as far as the land use goes. It's all about the structure and maintaining the structure and keeping the structure historically and accurately correct and preservation, that type thing. The parking lot, any landscaping changes she makes, I mean, basically the things you see on the outside are the purview of the historic district commission, so all that will have to be approved by them. I mean, Ms. Clark is on the agenda for Monday night to, to look at some of that, so.
Will we have a motion on the floor to approve? Do we have a second?
Well, just one question, though. So the parking upgrades, that does include, I was just reading the staff comments as far as addressing the sidewalks and everything too, so is that part of kind of...
That's something the historic...
I think it's more of a...
So that's got to be, got to be historic.
This is a straight up zoning, so y'all can't really put conditions on it. But historic district definitely looks at all those things that you can see from the street, basically.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, we have a, we have a second from Brandon. All those in favor? Oh my gosh, okay, hands raised. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, all those opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes four, five, six, seven, eight, nine to one? Is that right? Did I count right? All right. Good luck, Ms. Clark. Thank you. Okay. We have, and I'm going to mispronounce this name, Paguya, request rezon from R two to MF one. Abraham Paguya?
Pagaya.
Pagaya, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Wilcox is going to speak for him, I'm assuming?
You are correct in that and I apologize for, I guess, for subjecting y'all to a lawyer. I was prepared to apologize more profusely and then Frank showed up and so it made me feel a little bit better. Bo Wilcox, office address, seven eleven Locust here in Conway. Mr. Pagaya is a longtime client of mine and he, a few months ago, his wife passed away and he came to me about a project he wanted to do with his, with a home he owns on twenty-three oh seven Stout Street. And for those of you that aren't familiar with it, it's right at the corner of Stout and Meadow Lake, right behind, basically on the opposite side of the street of the storage units that are there off of Stout. Mr. Pagaya had put in a request for an accessory structure. His intent originally was to build something that was obviously compliant with the zoning there as a separate detached. He started the progress and Mr. Pagaya is sort of a, I guess you'd describe him as a handyman of sorts. He is doing the work on his own here. A few weeks into the project, I got a call from, I believe it was Kenny McCollum with code enforcement saying that it was not in compliance. And so I visited with Abraham about the situation and to a certain extent, we're here tonight to ask a little bit of forgiveness and, and just as much as permission because he, he is building what is in effect now in addition to the property, the existing home, I should say. He is, basically what it is, is it's an attached portion of the structure now. And it will be greater in size than the accessory. He initially had some accessory plans drawn up for a detached piece of, for a detached structure during the process of building. He, he, he connected it and we, he and I have had many conversations about this and, and I think it was an error on his part and he certainly acknowledges that. Mr. Pagaya has been in the United States for quite some time, but he's, there's a little bit of a language barrier still as well. And so I think he had some misunderstandings about what he could and could not do. The bottom line is, is that he had spoken with Kenny about this and it was recommended to him and, and after I reviewed it, it was, it was my decision as well to speak on his behalf and to present an application for a rezone from its current zoning to, I believe, you guys have the, I think it's to MF one. I do want to point out as far as the surrounding properties and the surrounding structures, as you all are probably aware, in the Stout Meadow Lake general area, you have a pretty wide variety of usages there. You've got, Stout Street itself has a lot of multifamily housing. There are some duplexes in the region. Right across Meadow Lake, there is an apartment complex there. And then, of course, I mentioned the storage units. Then there's, I think Larry Herndon has his insurance office there facing Washington. So within the, the general radius of the, of the property, there's a lot of different usages in place. And so what we're asking for the commission to do is sort of bless this after the fact. We admit that, that the construction probably should have stopped at some point. And it did stop. Once a stop work order was put in place, Mr. Pagaya did cease work on it so that we could evaluate our options. But basically, this is a, this amounts to the expansion of the existing structure to accommodate multifamily housing. And understand that you guys certainly don't like being in a, put in a position to have to do something with regard to some construction that's already taken place. But it's my understanding that everything that he has done as far as the, you know, the roughing in and all that kind of stuff, the plumbing and the electrical is compliant and, and ready to go. But again, he, he has ceased work on it until we get some determination on this request. And I'll entertain any questions.
On the front there, where it looks like there's a door, maybe he closed in the garage on the, we had a picture, I don't know if you have...
Right, right. I have that picture.
Okay. And, and it looks like that there's some exposed steel concrete block there. I mean, is he going to plan on bricking that in eventually?
Pardon me for just saying, let me ask...
No problem.
Yeah, he's, as far as finish out, Mr. Quinn, what he's planning on doing is, you know, brick or something that's consistent with the existing structure. I think it's a, it's a fairly older brick home that was there that he owns. And so what he's going to do is try to make it as consistent with that existing structure as possible. But as you know, sometimes that...
He just had, he just got stopped.
That's, that's part of it, yes, sir.
Mr. Wilcox, there's a, in the staff comments, it talks about the setback problems?
Yes.
And no, no variance request has been made at this point?
You know, the variance issue is something that I just, just saw, basically, as far as Mr. Lyons' comments on that. I mean, I saw what, when Beth prepared the package and emailed it out on Friday, I saw that. If he, if he needs to request a variance to accommodate that, I don't think we were terribly clear on whether there was going to be a setback issue or not. My understanding from reading the review of it is that it's about two or three feet. Is that correct on one side?
Three. But I mean, that sort of makes the rest of this moot if that's not addressed.
Well, and I understand that. And so I guess my question would be is if this can be conditionally approved or voted on with the variance being, and maybe that's something that Mr. Patrick can have some input on as, as far as...
Can we have some direction, Mr.?
The mechanism there.
Well, this is a straight up rezoning to, like before, when I mentioned, you can't put conditions on it. You could approve it to the multifamily one and they could either correct the building as is, like go in and cut off the wall and whatever they need to do to pull it back three feet, or at that time they could come and ask for a variance next month or some other time in the future and basically ask for forgiveness for the setback that's out of compliance. So you could approve multifamily. That still has to be addressed in some fashion in the future before they could probably get their building permit going again. Or you could possibly table it until they come back with everything and, you know, a variance and this request. Or you can approve it or deny it, however you want to look at it.
Can we table it and, and say it all at the same time?
If you want to. I mean, that's y'all's choice. If you, I'm just throwing that, I mean, Bo may want to weigh in on that, but...
You can't do it or build it until that, that issue's resolved anyway.
But that's, you know, if, if it's something, I guess basically to step back and look at it first, I would anyway, is, if it's multifamily one, is that a desirable land use for this piece of property? If you think it is or possibly could be, then maybe you want to entertain tabling it and they get their board of zoning adjustment, which y'all would act as the board of zoning adjustment with a variance in anticipation of the multifamily one. But, you know, if, if you don't see that MF one is an appropriate use for this property, then there's really no point in tabling it until a variance, so.
Well, I don't think I have a problem with the multifamily. I, I don't have a problem with that, but what I don't want to happen is us to approve it and Mr. Pagaya misunderstand and continue to build and then have the whole zoning issue. So it would make sense to me...
Have we asked if anybody wants to speak?
Oh, no, we haven't. And, and, and I'm sorry. But is there anybody else that needs to speak against this or for it? For it, I'm sorry, for it? Or anybody to speak in opposition of it? Okay, so you're none, we'll go back to our discussion. It would just make sense to me to, to table it and bring it all together at once.
And I'm fine with that and we can, you know, the only issue there is, of course, I don't want to, we, we wouldn't want to have to go back through the issue of publishing, which I know we don't have to do that if it's tabled by you all, so that's, that's the issue. As far as the, you know, the requesting of, of a setback variance, I think that's fine. I mean, you know...
Well, it's going to be necessary.
Yeah, absolutely. I understand that and...
He can't continue to build unless that issue's addressed.
But if we didn't approve MF one, I mean, what's the point of him coming back?
Well, I'm just saying.
That was, Mr. Quinn kind of touched on my question, which is whether you all have the discretion, and I think you do, to just approve conditioned upon the seeking of and the obtaining of the variance and obviously...
And we could.
Yeah, I think we could...
I, I don't have a problem with that.
It's in front of us, let's vote on it. And then the zoning thing is...
I feel we couldn't put a condition on it. It's either zoning or no.
Right.
No, you can't, but we can table it and, and address the zoning and everything all at one time.
My question is if we approve the, the rezoning to MF one, right? And he can't do anything else, he has to come back for the variance anyway.
You get what you want, yeah.
You get, it's, it's the same thing without tape, without having it comboed, right? Because he can't do anything.
My issue is the language barrier and everything. I want him to be clear that he...
Well, I can ameliorate that issue because that's what I hopefully will do.
We've already had some...
I understand.
Issues with it and I don't want him to think that he can, he's got free frame to just go.
Well, in that point, I mean, you can approve that tonight if you want to. The, the building issue stands regardless of whatever the zoning is, whatever it is right now, I think it's out of compliance with R two.
Right.
So one way or the other, that's going to need to be fixed at some point in time.
Okay.
So they're, they're intertwined, but they're not. The zoning is the zoning.
Yeah.
The building is the building, the setback issue, so however you want to play that, but you can, I mean, you can rezone it tonight if you want. That's the land use issue.
Then we'll entertain a motion.
At some point in time, they'll have to come back and fix the setback.
I have a question before we do that. The, the work that he's done, has that been permitted? Does, has he received permits from the city for, for the work that he's doing?
He got, he obtained some approval, but then when it became, see, I think there was a little bit of confusion on his part. Again, he put in a request for a specific type of structure that was suitable for the zoning. And then the structure, as he started building it, was out of compliance. So to answer your question, Ms. Armstrong, he has permit, he had permits for a certain type of structure, not the one that he has, he has constructed to date, although it is not complete. And once he was given a stop work order on it, he did cease work.
You said you had a question?
Well, I mean, my question is, first of all, I don't like doing these things out of order, but I mean, if he's willing to come, but, so the, the problem is, he needs to tell us how he is willing to address the, the setback issues before we can decide on rightfully what we're going to do there, because...
Well, he can pull it in three feet and two feet on the side.
But if he's not willing to change the structure, then we're going to have to waive the...
The zoning issue, right? That's what we're building.
If he refuses to, to change the structure, then the city's just not going to approve, I mean, they're...
Yes, my understanding that, I mean, if, if he failed to do what he was supposed to do from a variance standpoint, then the permits wouldn't be let and if that's a fair assessment of it.
I don't see why we'd waste another month of this guy's life if y'all don't plan on approving MF one.
Well, the thing about it is, is the next month of this guy's life, he can't do anything anyway.
And he's, by the way, with, with respect to...
If we vote it down, he could go on about his business of converting it back to whatever he needs to convert it.
Well, he can't, I mean, it would be silly for him to put any more money in it until the zoning, I mean, until the variance were closed.
Unless we vote it down.
Yeah.
But if he, if we vote it down, he got to start tearing stuff down. He can start doing that now.
Yeah.
So I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Is that everybody?
No.
No? All those in opposition, opposed?
Nay.
Two, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. Two to eight, your motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Dyer. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Shaw. We have, we have a request to rezone from A one to a P U D. At the south of Lower Ridge Road, abutting Sun Valley Estates to the east, McKenna Cove to the south, and CHDC property to the west. Mr. Shaw, I assume you're going to speak in favor of this request?
Yeah, Frank Shaw, thirteen fifteen Main Street, Conway. And I'm, I'm, I have a bad client because I'm representing myself tonight, okay? So this is my project and I'm representing me. So what I have is some property that I had purchased recently, some of it I'd had for several years. And we're trying to put a residential development in on the east side of town. The, it, it joins McKenna Cove and if you've been out there, you know how that has just sat there for a few years and it's just exploded. So what we have, this is, we've proposed this as a P U D, but because of the new six thousand square foot lot minimums, nearly all of our lots exceed six thousand. They're like six thousand and six and Brian has come up with an average of thirteen point seven three and that's fifty-nine hundred and eighty square feet. A lot of them are sixty, six thousand and six and twelve and they're all right at six thousand square feet. We've got quite a few lots and they're a hundred and, how many do we have, a hundred and forty-seven? We had met with, last week and week before, we'd met with a development review and a public informational meeting and a development review. We had originally drawn, originally drawn this with two entrances, but we met with the fire department, you know, everybody you meet with, and they wanted one sixty foot access. So we combined two thirties into one sixty and moved the entrance over to the side. We had two just coming straight in. I think it really works a little better for me. So we have a sixty foot right of way entrance coming off Lower Ridge, which then turns into a roundabout. And then after the roundabout, we're asking for the P U D really is based on the fact that we need a thirty-five foot right of way and rather than a fifty foot. I believe the city has done that already. Let me, let me tell you how I look at the right of ways. The street is twenty-seven feet from curb to curb, every, every city street. If you have a fifty foot right of way, then every property owner has eleven and a half feet in addition to their property. In other words, there's twenty-three feet, you cut that in half, it's eleven and a half. So on each side of the street, you have eleven and a half feet that the city owns, but you get to mow it. If you have a thirty-five foot easement, then you have a twenty-seven foot street, same sized street, but there's only eight feet, which is four feet on each side, that belongs to the city. Then you have to put your utilities behind that. So whether you call it a right of way or whether you give the property to the property owner, their front yard's the same size. The difference is we lose a whole street if we have to go with a fifty foot right of way. So we're asking for that modification and, and the, on the, on Brian's staff review, you'll note that the average minimum lot for an R one area, we're almost R one. In fact, with six thousand square feet, that is R one minimum now. But our, our lots are sixty-five feet across the front with an average depth of ninety-two and a half. That's with a thirty-five foot right of way. We drew it first with a thirty foot right of way, which gave us substantially two and a half foot bigger lots on each side. But the street's the same size, so you have the same amount of yard either way. That's really not an issue with us. If you look at the comprehensive plan from oh four, it shows that this area is appropriate for traditional neighborhood, which the TN designation is, revolves around a more compact neighborhood, kind of like the neighborhood at Hendrix, and we're in compliance with, I think, most all of that. Everything that they recommended for us at the development review meeting, we've incorporated into this. This is our second plat that we, we've prepared. And we meet the twenty percent green space. And with the streets as they are, we have, the fire department said they had no problem. That's a big issue. Now, there is an access to the east that pre-exists us. It goes into Azalea Loop and long, long ago, that property was platted and sold off and there is a right of way through there. It's unimproved at this point, but it would provide the secondary access to this property, which is crucial. If you have an accident at the first, you have a fire department call or EMT call, we If you have an accident at the first, you have a Fire Department call or EMT call, we have two accesses. I believe that when we get to it, the city will make us improve that portion of that street in Azalea Loop for access. It's a fifty-foot right-of-way, and it comes right up into our property. There, there were no outstanding problems with the proposed development, were noted at the required meetings. One thing I'd like to point out to you, if you can look at the very south boundary, we have, we're bringing sewer across the state property from, oh, from south of the property. We have to run it across the state CHDC property. They've given us the easement, Conway Corp says. What we would like to do, maybe in lieu of sidewalks or in partial lieu of sidewalks, we would like to build a walking trail from the subdivision, from our southern street, all the way to Theodore Jones. It goes straight to it, and if you have an aerial map, we'll have to talk to the school district and the state. We already have the easement for the sewer, and what we would like to do is pave that asphalt it, gravel it, improve it so that these children and the children from Azalea Loop can walk to Theodore Jones right through there. And it's, it's just a narrow section, it will back up to McKenna Cove. It will be behind those lots there. It'd be on top of our sewer easement. So we have a northern access, an east, an eastern access to Azalea Loop, and then we're proposing a walking trail for the children to get to school. We have, in addition, the staff has suggested some conditions on the exterior, because we are a PUD. And if we really had, if we really could go with a fifty-foot right-of-way street, we really would just be an R1 neighborhood. This is so close that we're only talking about the street right-of-ways, it's really the only issue. And the reduced building setbacks because of that. But on page two, there are seven conditions that the staff has suggested. I've kinda put myself in a bind because I made a presentation to the, to you all and the City Council a while back over on South Donaghy for some of my clients, and these were the exact same seven conditions that I recommended you put on my client. And it passed, and so whenever they came up, and it was kinda like it was my idea, so you need to do it too. So we're not gonna have any problem with those one through seven on page two. Staff suggested conditions. In fact, we don't have any problem with all fifteen of those conditions. But the first seven are exterior requirements for the homes. Now, I could talk a lot longer, but I figure I'll just be quiet and let y'all ask me some questions.
Well, let me ask this, is there anybody else to speak in favor of this request? Okay. Is there anybody to speak in opposition of this request?
I have one point I'd like to make.
Please come to the podium, sir, and state your name and address.
I like his plan, great idea, I've only got one issue.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Randy Williams.
I'm sorry, what?
Randy Williams, thirty-nine Bond Lane, Grand Bar. But the, the lot where he's talking about connecting to Azalea Loop, that lot's only a hundred and twenty feet wide. The secondary access, if you take thirty feet off of that, forty feet off of that, there's not much left. And it's still on a well and a septic system.
I believe that he did away with the secondary access, and it's just, it's, there's one access now, right?
The one, let me correct you, the one to Azalea Loop, that right-of-way is already in existence. We didn't, we're not adding that because it's just.
It's platted in the road.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay.
It, it's, this one that goes east. It comes through, it comes. Yes, it's already platted fifty-foot right-of-way. It's already there, we're not touching it, we may have to improve it, but we can't widen.
No, it's Azalea Lane. I think that's where he's getting confused, because it's that Azalea Lane that runs.
East.
Yeah.
Yeah, east and west, not north and south.
Yeah, Azalea Lane runs east and west to attach to Azalea Loop. That thirty, that fifty-foot right-of-way was there when Bob Wilcox and O.T. Baker subletted this back in the sixties or seventies. And there's a fifty-foot right-of-way in there, is what our plan's on show. So we're not adding or taking any from you, it's a good question, we're just, may have to pave it with the Fire Department.
Okay.
So it won't reduce your lot any, in fact, it'll improve it a little bit, maybe if you like that, if you like asking.
I love what you're doing, okay. I would just, I would just start over. Listen, part of the lot.
Sure. Yeah. I think it's already. I think they're just gonna pave it, and right now it's probably gravel, isn't it?
It, it's already there, as I understand it, we're not gonna take any more from anybody. Great, that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else to speak in opposition of this request? Saying none, we'll bring it back into commission.
Well, I have a question for Mr. Shaw.
All right.
Oh.
Hi, Mr. Jeremiah Johnson, sixteen Azalea Loop.
Okay.
'Cause, 'cause I know with the Azalea Lane being paved, I know, 'cause actually I know Azalea Loop is a very narrow road, and a lot of kids actually are out there, a lot of towns, and people actually fly up and down there, is saying, like improvements for that right there as well? 'Cause actually the road is very, 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 very narrow.
That's not up to us.
'Cause two cars really can't fit down the road at the same time.
Have you seen this picture?
I live right by there, so I kinda know.
The, the, the one that runs east and west?
I don't.
'Cause I, you live on Loop, right?
Yes, sir, sixteen, on that side of the property and all that.
So you're talking about those lanes where you come in off, that's metal, lower ridge. So they're talking about this little, little spot right there? Okay, so they're just saying they're gonna connect their neighborhood to, to that neighborhood to their.
Also, they should have more traffic, that, 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 there's a lot of towns.
Okay.
Also, you can go higher and see more houses in there, that's more traffic on Azalea Loop.
Okay.
Which is more dangerous, you know, for kids walking in, very susceptible.
I just wanna make sure you knew what we were talking about.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Is there like a stop, is it gonna be a stop sign to come in, or they're gonna connect there, or are they gonna have it to where? That's what I can hear.
Oh, yes, sir.
Sorry.
Name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Daniel Ryan, I'm at eighteen Azalea Loop.
Yes, sir.
I live right next to Jeremiah there.
Okay.
And I, I don't have a problem with the, the, the new subdivision, I think it would just improve our property. The only concern I have was, Mr. Shaw had mentioned, there's a section, I think, on the north side of Azalea Loop that probably wouldn't put a house on, 'cause somebody might not wanna be right on Lower Ridge Road, 'cause it's a busy street.
Right.
Um, and one of the things he mentioned was maybe a convenience store at some point. I don't, just as long as that's not in the plan.
No, sir, he would have to, he would have to.
Okay, that would be my only opposition, the, the subdivision, I think, is a great idea, but yeah, the, having a convenience store right there. And the only other concern I would have too is, is how far these houses are gonna be backed up to my property, just because the only reason I live out there is because I don't have somebody right up against me. That's why I don't live in town, downtown Conway, I like to have some space. So, yeah, that would be my only other concern, but other than that, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our proposal does include a commercial lot on the north.
Yeah, it does.
That's what I was fixing to get to. Are you gonna try to put a come and go there, Frank?
No. The Come and Go has not hired me to talk to y'all about this. I don't think, I, I really don't think that, knowing what little I know about commercial development, that Come and Go or anybody like that would be looking to put a service station in, that would be a different zoning. What I'm gonna be looking at, what, what I think, and I respect their opinion, is when you're on Lower Ridge Road, and I grew up on that road, I, I mean, I, I've been on that side of town till just a few years ago. And there's a lot of traffic out there, and the city needs to work on that road. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it does, and we've talked about that, it needs to be improved, it's too narrow. But there, unless you get out on sixty-five, and that's, that's a problem, or you go all the way to Harps, there's no place to buy a gallon of milk. So I'm thinking, whatever, I don't know what you should put in there, but I'm thinking some sort of store that sells lots of different products, that would be neighborhood-friendly. Come and Go would be, that, they, they won't, they won't go in that neighborhood. But, and I'm not even thinking about gas pumps, but I'm thinking about something like, somebody mentioned the other night at the development meeting, a small Walmart grocery store, or Dollar General, or General Dollar, or somebody that sells things, because this neighborhood here itself, along with McKenna Cove, which is backs right up to it, we adjoining it, there are a lot of people there, and that school is just right there. That's some of the things I'm thinking of. I have, I mean, I promise you, I have no plans and have talked to nobody about that property. But I don't think it's residential property, so I'm saying commercial of some variety. Probably C2, C3 would be the same, except you could have, you could have a drive-in hamburgers. Are we talking about hamburger stands? You could put one there, but I, that's not what I'm thinking at this time. Who knows in ten years what we'll want there? I don't know.
Put that in there, there's no way to get in and out of there.
Right, not right now, you, you wouldn't wanna do it. No, it, we, we would be a, it, nobody would do it. So that looks to me like it's something down the road, but I don't have it platted for homes, 'cause I really just don't think it's appropriate. If you'll notice a piece to the left that's not platted, that, that belongs to my good friend and, and Steve Matthews, and I, this was the Matthews property, that's why it's called Matthews Meadows. If I can just digress a minute, Steve's dad and my dad were cousins and best friends, and before he passed away, he came to me and said, would you divide this up for my children and grandchildren? So I had, had it surveyed up, and I deeded this off to five of his family members right before he passed away. And then I have bought all that property back that I deeded off from him. But I grew up on this property, this is, these were our friends and our family and our neighbors, I, I've been all over it a hundred times. And so I divided it up, and now I put it back together, and I find some satisfaction in that. Some of it was landlocked, we landlocked some of it, but now it's not anymore, okay? I'm open for questions, I just had to tell you that little story.
What size homes do you anticipate putting on the lot?
We wanna do, we wanna, we want to do what they've done in McKenna Cove, and I'm gonna say thirteen, maybe twelve, fifty, thirteen to fifteen, sixteen. On these sized lots, you, you don't really need to go any bigger than probably fifteen, so we're talking about starter homes. The McKenna, I keep talking about it, but they've bricked all those houses, and Hepner, and Jacob Longing, and Scott Lucas have built, done a good job building that out, it's very attractive. I wanna do the same thing, that's, that's it. And our lots are a little wider and a little more shallow, they're a little, not as deep, but they're a little wider. We would have accessed it from McKenna Cove with the street, but their covenants prohibited us from cutting up one of those lots. Or we would've tried to buy a lot, in fact, we did, tried to buy a lot and access it through there, we'd had to come to you to do it. But we, we couldn't do it because the covenants wouldn't allow it. Or we would've had a southern access if we could've done it. So this is the best I can do, there's a street that goes back west, that's into CHDC property, it's a stubout street. I wish the city would approach CHDC or the State of Arkansas about the six or seven hundred acres they own that they're not using. I personally believe it's a block to development in that part of town, and it's just sitting there, it's beautiful property. Maybe we'd get it for a park. But anyway, we have a street into it, any more questions?
Okay, we have this in commission, do we have any discussion?
Thanks, Frank.
I'm a little concerned about the plan for sidewalks, I mean, two, three of these conditions that we have here from the staff says something about pedestrian traffic and sidewalks, and what Shaw had proposed was in lieu of that, one walking trail through the center. But will that suffice for the entire development, that's my only question.
Let me address that issue, because, I mean, just be clear, we do not have state approval to do that. It's kinda contingent upon me getting this general plan approved through y'all and the City Council a week from tomorrow night. They've given us the sewer easement, I believe they'll let us overlay it, but we don't know that. So while that's my idea, I can't make that proposal, 'cause I don't have the, the barter to give you, I can't guarantee you I can do that.
Yeah, and kind of built condition number ten, 'cause this thing will still have to be platted and go through the planning commission as part of the subdivision process. And at that time would be a good time, appropriate time to take a look at sidewalks and whether or not pedestrian trails and loop, et cetera, all that, that'd be the ideal time to take a look at that in detail.
If I could point out to you one more thing, if you'll look on lot numbered, I can't see it.
Down to the bottom, southeast corner, this lot in the very corner, if you look, you can see that on the, over in Azalea Loop, there is a lot there in that corner, and for y'all, for y'all that live there, that, that lot in the southwest corner of Azalea Loop is zon, is platted as Park, P-A-R-K.
I don't believe it can ever be built on, that's my understanding of the law. We have enough room, if anybody wanted us to, to go across. What is that lot, Ryan, can you read that?
Lot twenty-four.
Yeah.
We have enough room to go across lot twenty-four with an access to that park in Azalea Loop. But we don't know if people over there want it, we don't know if that's feasible, it's overgrown and it's not improved, but, but it's Park, and I think once you put Park on a plat, it's, by golly, it's a Park. And the city has an exercise dominion over it, the neighborhood POA has it, but it's there, and we could do that if anybody wanted us to. We might get to that later. So far, we've agreed to everything the city's asked us to do, we're just asking for your approval.
So like Jerry, I do have concerns around, while I appreciate the, the walking trail in lieu of the sidewalks, putting a hundred and forty whatever homes in here, that, I mean, we talk every month about the lack of walking paths for children, especially right by a school district inside of subdivisions, and the dangers that we, that, that are faced every day by residents who come before us and say, no, 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 my child walks to school. So I have serious concerns there, I also have concerns around the commercial store a little bit, and also the size of lots, so, I, I mean.
The commercial part of it is what's got me stumped right now, I understand. And, and I love the fact that you're gonna do a sidewalk all the way to Theodore Jones, I mean, that's great.
If they'll let us.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can make an emotion, make a motion with conditions to remove the commercial, to table a commercial piece?
We can do, yeah, this is a PUD, we can make any conditions we want.
The commercial piece is kind of concerning as well.
I, I, I think I'd just feel better if they had to come back for that.
I think that would be a good option.
Well, you know, let me make this point, I don't like speculative zoning any more than you do, and I don't have a, anybody looking at that property. So if you want to cut that out for now and let me come back with what is, what I have an interest in.
I think that would make the.
With the idea that I.
Somebody came in and said, hey, I wanna put up dollars.
Yeah, because honestly, if I said I don't have anybody, I don't have anybody looking at it. I haven't even shown this plat to anybody but just a few people. And I'd be happy to come back on that commercial, as long as you don't outlaw it up front, 'cause I don't have anything to do with that.
No.
It's got to go something else.
As, as long as it's something appropriate, I don't have a problem with it, it's right there on Lower Ridge, it's, I mean, I'm okay with that.
If y'all wanna entertain that thought, I would say change thirteen to basically a non-zoning at this point, so that it's not zoned for anything, basically, if Frank's agreeable to that. And that happened once before, if y'all remember back, some of y'all may have been on the commission at that time. When Walmart Neighborhood Market came in, they initially didn't quite know Chick-fil-A was going out front and whatever, it was non-zoned to start with, basically, then they came back and rezoned it to allow the Chick-fil-A and that kinda thing. So it's been done before, so you could basically call out that commercial lot and just say it has no zoning at this point, it'll have to come back and be turned into something at some other time.
I'm okay with the street width and all the stuff that, I mean, the, the lot size, yeah, it's small, but Conway's got a real need for smaller homes, I mean, there's just not.
Six thousand feet and that's your all one minimum.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would say this, I, I would say this to the neighbors, I, I, I think that I wouldn't wanna put anything in there that you wouldn't, you wouldn't be eventful to you, but, but I would be, have reservations about just approving it for commercial. So let me just pull that back, if we can do that, and we'll just go with the residential, and when I find somebody, I'll tell them what it is.
That sounds great. Okay, anybody, any more?
Yeah.
I mean, even with pulling back the commercial, I still have the issues with sidewalks. The, the internal sidewalks, I guess is what they're called, as well as.
Did you read number ten, though?
For the moment sidewalks are required.
They are required.
Or you're saying the walkaway versus, you say what he's proposing for the.
Part of the planning process, and they are required, so.
Yeah. I thought, okay, I may have misread this, hang on.
Yeah, Brian answered that.
I'll be dedicated and conservative.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, as Scott pointed out, the subdivision process is really the ideal time to take a look at that, and there's mechanisms within the subdivision ordinance to do in lieu and not in lieu and that kinda thing.
Right.
And it comes back to y'all as part of the planning commission, I mean, something to stop every planning mission, it doesn't go to council or, or whatever, but at this point, the intent is the sidewalks are part of this, and design ordinance even specifically states that unless there's some outstanding reason why they shouldn't be, sidewalks are part of the PUD.
If I can add, I mean, we're gonna be coming back for the subdivision plating process, and, you know, this is punch list in general, if you read it, so it's not specific to actual rights of way, this is the intended plan, but we still need to vet out some things through the subdivision process, so I'd certainly not want to tie ourselves to any, you know, I've seen that in past PUDs where you get the. Subdivision, and our hands are tied on utility and other things that really need to be vetted out through the subdivision process.
Okay, so, does somebody wanna do it, or y'all?
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, pardon me, ma'am? Well, I asked if anybody was in favor and, or in opposition. So which one are you?
I was taking my turn, but I did not come prepared to say anything.
Okay, your name and address.
I'm Brenda Moore, and I live in McKenna Cove.
Okay.
And I bought this beautiful piece of property because it had a beautiful view in the back, and I built my house, and I know that's irrelevant, you know, 'cause it's just the way progress is. So my house is gonna be for sale for sure, but the thing that concerns me is when they did McKenna Cove, they cut a street to Azalea. Traffic, horrible, no speed bump, I've got a petition right now for a speed hunt. We've had a dog hit and a mailbox knocked down because of the traffic coming.